...comments as a courtesy, please make sure that you've got your cellphones on tonight. If any final action taken tonight, you choose to appeal, it'll normally would take effect five working days following the meeting unless a written appeal to the Planning Commission decision is filed in the Planning Office by April 29th at 5:00 PM. In the event of appeal, then the decision would refer to the County Commission for a hearing on May 21st at 9:00 AM. The meetings of the County Commission are held the same road. So, at this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda, the minutes of the March 25th meeting are included as part of the consent agenda. Are there any objections to the consent agenda from the Planning Commission?
I don't have objections, I have a question.
Sure.
On the number three, is that, that's just like one year only after you do it every year on the fireworks thing off the Wally corner?
No, that would be continuous. I mean, only one time a year, but if you approve this, it would be, they wouldn't have to come back.
Unless there's complaints and accountability force that way.
Right, right.
Okay.
And nobody called on it, so...
Any objections from the Planning Commission? All right, here are none, and I'm going to read each item for the public. We have the consent agenda. If you have any objections to the item you want to move to the regular agenda, please raise your hand and we'll move to the regular agenda. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the March 25th meeting. The second item is a conditional use permit, 13-022, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building. They're requesting 3,360 feet, and this is at 46702 Sage Street, West Acres subdivision. Item number three is a conditional use permit to allow temporary fireworks stand. This is located one mile north of the Wally corner. The fourth item is a rezoning, to rezone from A1 agricultural to C commercial, and this is on the north side of Rowena. Item five, a conditional use permit to allow a banquet reception hall with off-street parking, and this is located at 26665 481st Street, or Avenue, excuse me, one-half mile south of Iverson Crossing. Number six is a conditional use permit to transfer one residential building eligibility from the southeast quarter, section southeast quarter to the southwest quarter, southeast quarter. This is located one mile north of Corks Runner exit. Number seven is a conditional use permit to transfer three residential building eligibilities with a bunch of legal description, which is located three miles northeast of Brandon. I'd be happy to read the legal description if you want to get some entertainment. Item number eight is a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building. 1350 is being requested, and this is at 48390 2663, one mile northeast of Rowena. And, number nine, is preliminary plan for the Meadows, which is on the west side of Hartford.
It's deferred?
And that one is going to be deferred, is that correct?
Yes. The request of the petitioner.
Consent agenda is to defer it.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
I have a question on that. When we, as I see, it's called tabling the item, I mean, there's a difference in the procedure to bring it back off the table or deferral. If we do this, is it like tabling?
It's basically a deferral. I put that in there so laypeople that read the agenda would understand it's going to be quite a while.
It's indefinite?
Yeah.
So, we're ahead to call it an indefinite deferral, dropping the table because of maybe the...
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, you know, because we have to have a separate action to bring something off the table with the two-thirds.
This is an indefinite?
Yeah, indefinite.
Okay.
If one of these is discussed, we just mention that this time?
Right, please.
I'd like to hear what number five, please.
Number five, which is a conditional use permit to allow banquet reception hall, is that the correct one? Okay. Any other objections from the audience on the consent agenda? Then I entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda, which is item number five.
No. You want to approve the consent agenda?
We've got to approve the consent agenda.
Without item five.
Without item five, here. I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a question then.
Okay.
Does that include item 10?
No, 10, I think we have to go separately. So, a motion, is there a second then to, okay, so a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, moving item five to the regular agenda. All those who have a favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Motion carries. Okay, so then we will hear first from the stand, and then we'll take comments from the audience on item number five. And Dustin, you have that one.
All right, item number five, conditional use permit, 13-025. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit to allow a banquet slash reception hall in the Perry Plan Development District to have the required spaces off-site from the property with the subject use on it. Just a kind of a quick, quick idea here, I believe, this is just the site plan for it. Lot two here is where the banquet hall is going to be. Banquet halls, reception halls are allowed in the Perry Plan Development District, so this isn't allowed use. The only thing this conditional use permit is pertaining to is to the parking requirement. So according to Article 15-01 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance, parking spaces for all structures shall be located on the same site as the structure such parking is intended to serve, except that by conditional use permit, parking may be located within 300 feet of the use it is intended to serve. So because the banquet hall is located on the one-acre lot two and cannot fit all of the parking on lot two, the petitioner has applied for a conditional use permit to have the remaining required parking on lot one, and that is what the conditional use permit is pertaining to. Just to give a quick summary of this, and I'm just going ahead and do it now because it's the same property for the variance. On October 12th, 2012, staff met with the representatives for, for the project and discussed allowing the banquet slash reception hall. At that time, we discussed that we would need to amend the Perry Plan Development District to allow those, that such use. Also during that time, we discussed that this would be a part of the Red Rock Corridor overlay district in which further standards were, needed to be met beyond the 1990 revised zoning ordinance. On October 23rd, staff received a site plan of one-half acre that was not sufficient in size for the, the building itself, plus the parking and all the setback requirements. After talking with the petitioner again, we then brought the text amendment to allow the banquet slash reception hall to the Planning Commission and the County Commission on December 18th of 2012, is when we adopted the, the new amendment that would allow banquet slash reception halls in the Perry Plan Development District. So these uses were, this use was a change to be allowed during that meeting. On January 22nd, the applicant submitted a plat for lots one and two that are before you today, even though a site plan had not been approved for the subject petition for the banquet slash reception hall. On March 15th, a site plan was filed with the Planning Office that did not meet the requirements of the lot. We had discussions with the applicant. On the 18th of March of 2013, another site plan was filed with corrections that however still did not meet all of the requirements. On October, or on March 20th of 2013, staff held a meeting with the applicant to address the issues that were still missing, and after those discussions, we realized that the parking would not be able to be met on lot two. And so that was where we determined the need to apply for this conditional use permit to allow the additional required parking on lot one of tract one of GM's addition. So we look at five things when we're discussing conditional use permits. The first is the effect of the use upon the enjoyment and other property in the immediate vicinity. Like I said, this is just for the parking, not the use. So the proposed parking plan will have little impact on neighboring properties. The construction of the required parking spaces on lots one and two shall not impede the enjoyment or use of the surrounding properties. The second thing we look at is the effect of the normal and orderly development of the surrounding vacant properties. The proposed parking should have no impact on the further construction or development within the subdivision or the general area. The parking for lots one and two should be for the banquet slash reception hall that it is on lot two. The third thing that we look at is utilities, access roads, drainage facilities that are provided. Access is proposed to be off of 481st Streets, or Avenue, excuse me, and it will be a joint access as shown on the site plan between the two lots. Rural water will be extended to the building, and a septic system will be provided for the onsite wastewater system. The fourth thing is off-street parking requirement, and that's what we're looking at with this conditional use permit. The applicant subdivided the two, the land into two one-acre parcels before receiving site plan approval. Therefore, this is its only remedy to allow the proposed facility with the, the required parking, because it does need to expand to the, the lot one to accommodate the required 66 parking spaces that's required, based on the, the size of the, the facility. The last thing that we look at is if it has, if it's going to have any offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations. There shouldn't be anything that would cause a nuisance to the surrounding properties based on this use. Staff has found that the conditions that we have provided with the conditional use permit should help ensure that if the required spaces are to be split or sold, because these aren't two separate lots, there could be an instance where lot one were to be sold off and then lot two where the proposed use would fall short on its parking requirement. So in that case, we have, we have put a condition that if any portion of the required parking were to be sold off in a future reference, then this site would have to immediately come back in for a site plan review process so that we can look again at the, the occupancy of the building, as well as the required parking spaces and so such. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use, which addresses the parking on lots one and two with the following conditions, that if any portion of the required parking is split or sold to another property owner, the site shall immediately go through that site plan review process, and number two, that the property shall be in conformance with the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Mini Hawthaw County, which includes the Red Rock Corridor overlay district standards. So just to reiterate, the use is a permitted use, it is allowed, doesn't need a conditional use permit to have a banquet or a reception hall in the Perry Plan Development District. This conditional use is just to allow the required, I think it's about 20 spaces that can't fit on lot two, to be on lot one.
And before we have questions for Dustin, I failed to mention, for those of you in the audience that were here for any items on the consent agenda, those items were approved, so you're, you're free to go or hang around for the fun if you'd like. Your call. So, any questions for Dustin?
I had a question on my initial, as item number one. One of the stipulations for approval was to get a permit for the approach off of Buckeye Street. I hope I can bring that up, but that approach already exists, so I didn't invite...
Then you can, Dustin, more.
Then I don't need to do that.
No, you don't need to.
I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, I'll let him know.
So, for Dustin, any questions on item number...
So, this comes back again with all the list of everything required, paving, all this kind of stuff, lighting, all that, or is that all of the corridor?
Basically, it's a, it's a permitted use under the zoning ordinance, because we amended the zoning ordinance to allow this. So all they have to do is meet the standards of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance in the Red Rock Corridor overlay district. So they're, they're basically, like I indicated, they have submitted a number of site plans. Basically, they have to be able to provide us a site plan that meets all the standards before they are allowed to use that use on that property. And so one, one of, yeah, so, you know, landscaping, landscaping is what we're going to be addressing with the variance, you know, the septic system, the, the water, the access, the setbacks, the parking. Now, these are, the, the parking that we're discussing here are the required spaces which have to be paved. They probably will have overflow on lot one, too, that won't have to be paved, but they have to be required to have 66 parking spaces paved, plus a loading, their loading dock that, it's kind of hard to see on the site plan, but it's there. So basically, they're going through a site plan review process. These are, the landscaping, which we'll discuss in a minute, and the parking were the two biggest items that still need to be addressed through either conditional use or a variance because they're not able to meet the, the requirements that are set forth within the zoning ordinance.
And this falls within that, I know when you did the Red Rock Corridor plan, this was that commercial which came down?
Yeah, yeah, this is part of the Perry Plan Development District, which this is sub-area F, which is a 12-acre parcel, which is, calls out for commercial, certain commercial uses, and that's why we had to amend the zoning ordinance to allow banquet slash reception halls in this sub-area, because it wasn't called out before. So back in December, when we amended, the County Commission amended that, now they are allowed. And it was because of this applicant coming in and requesting that.
Question, Mark, and you're saying that 66 of those parking places have to be paid. Does that mean that how many, what's the maximum lot that can be there then, besides all this?
Well, according to the building code, the occupancy for the building is 320. The building itself is 6,600 square feet, 4,600 is banquet hall area, 2,000 of that is kitchen area, prep area, garage. So we, we base, the, the parking spaces were based off of one space per 100 square feet of building area.
Does it speculate, stipulate in like the Red Rock Corridor, what like facade this building has to look like?
We didn't call out the facade, we did call out, it can't be like a highly reflective lime green, you know, color or something.
So it can be like a, kind of like a, a high B banquet hall, like tea, it could look something like that? I don't know if you may have that. Especially a morden building with a little mansard on the front.
We, I probably have them somewhere, I do have a photo of the facade that they're proposing.
I guess maybe they want to notice sort of look like the landscape place to the east.
No, it's not going to look like that, no.
Question, how wide is the driveway then? It's going to be split with the two properties?
What, they have not gotten the driveway permit from the County Highway Department yet, with the County Highway, and I've had discussions with the County Highway. We're going to have them require a 36-foot driveway, which will allow for one in and two outs, so a left and a right out and a one in, which will help accommodate the, you know, the in-and-out traffic going into this facility and out. And we, and we, the Highway discussed that they'd like that joint access between the two lots, so that they can limit the number of accesses that go into this, this commercial area in the future. There is one access that already is up further north for this, of the 12 acres, or 10 acres that is still north of here, and so this access, that's why we have them propose the joint access for lots one and two.
Any other questions for Dustin? Is the petitioner here? Just go ahead.
Sam Asim on behalf of Matt Safari. I didn't realize until last year, when I started having nieces getting married, how tough it was to find a place to have a reception after the wedding and have the dining facilities and everything. Mr. Safari has been in the catering business for quite a number of years, and this is his dream, to build a nice facility out there, not a morden style of structure, but rather have Eiffel on the front, so it's a nice-looking building. And the sole reason what you're seeing is going on between item five and item 10 is financing. He's trying to put more money into the building, less money into the land. I'm selling him lot one under a contract for deed, so lot two has been purchased outright. He must use the remainder of the SBA funding to put it into the facility to make it nicer, and then we're doing seller financing on lot one. So, no different than if he went to the bank, in this case, though, it's a company that I own along with a partner that owns lot one, and we're just simply providing seller financing. So ultimately, he will also own lot one. In fact, he will have an equitable interest in it, just subject to the payment on the contract for deed. That's it. So he's actually going to own both parties, and why this was done in a two-tiered fashion, again, was just to make the facility, so he had the funds to make the facility that much nicer. That's the sole reason. So this is a financing thing. We talked with, with Pat and Dustin when we were doing, doing this, and that's a solution that we came up with, and, and it was also our suggestion that, hey, we, we're not, nobody's trying to pull anything over on the county here. We're, we're okay with keeping the thumb on, so that if, let's say he defaulted and it went back, it has to come back to you folks again. So nobody's trying to escape or escape anything here, that's, that's not the intent.
Questions for Mr. Asim? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience want to speak to this item? What's your letter?
Move for approval with whatever conditions apply.
Second. Section, second to approve with conditions, any discussion? Call a question, all those who have a favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. All right, if I'm not mistaken, at this point, we need to adjourn as the Planning Commission and reconvene as the zoning board of adjustment. Any motion in the house?
Yes, please.
All those who have a favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. The zoning board of adjustment.
I think we just lost the sun, though.
What's that?
The sun was out for a minute.
Okay, so, as a zoning board of adjustment, we have one item tonight, which is item 10 on our agenda, which is a variance to eliminate the 14-foot landscaping buffer, and Dustin has that one as well.
All right, so variance 13-03 is to eliminate the required 15-foot landscape buffer. We just talked about this item, so I'm going to try to skim through this presentation as much as possible. The applicant is requesting the approval to eliminate the landscaping buffer between lots one and two. Currently, the landscaping buffer is shown in the site plan on the screen. These properties are within the sub-area F of Perry Plan Development District and are subject to the Red Rock Corridor overlay district, in which the landscaping is called out in the overlay district. The overlay district regulations require a 15-foot landscaping buffer for each commercial property, and that's according to Article 11-10-03 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance. If you looked at the reports, there was charts that were in there, basically between commercial properties, each commercial property is required to have a 15-foot landscaping buffer. So because this is divided into two one-acre lots, even though it's the same ownership and same property, there's a required 15-foot landscaping buffer on both this, the south and the north of lots one and two. Actually, with regards to that landscaping, and there hasn't been a site plan approved for this, and it's not on here, there will be a required landscaping along the north of lot one, too. But that is not what the, the petitioner is requesting to get rid of, it's just the, the landscaping between lots one and two, because he is potentially owning both of those, and that's where the, the property is, where the use is going to be. Just to kind of reiterate some of the things that happened, there was numerous site plans being back and forth between staff and the applicants. I believe after the site plan that was submitted on the 21st, that, which is this site plan here, we had discussions with the applicant, in which we talked about the parking and the landscaping. Those were the two major items that weren't being met on the site plan, and that is why we did the conditional use permit for the parking, and the landscaping is being brought forth to you, because the applicant does not want to meet that condition of the zoning ordinance. So we look at five things when we're discussing variances, the first being that specific circumstances or conditions are, exist on the property. So not all situations or events can be covered by the zoning ordinance, and thus a mechanism is put into place to allow the public to seek a variation to their regulations, and that's what the variance is for tonight. In this situation, there are not any compelling sets of circumstances or conditions which are somewhat unique that support a granting of a variance. The applicant subdivided the land into two one-acre parcels prior to receiving a site plan approval for the development. The applicant indicated that the reason for subdividing it into two one-acre parcels was for financing reasons. However, staff doesn't believe that a financial hardship is an adequate reason to eliminate the zoning regulations for these sites. The second thing that we look at is that a variance does not grant a use which is not otherwise allowed in the zoning district. The banquet slash reception hall is allowed under the Perry Plan Development District. We went through that process to allow these reception halls in the sub-area F, and so that's not an issue here. The third thing is that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwanted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would not be an unwarranted hardship. The applicant was supplied the Red Rock Corridor overlay district standards, the zoning ordinance standards, prior to plating the two lots off and prior to getting site plan approval. So they were aware of these issues, and once again, it was because of financial reasons that they, they did it this way. The fourth thing is that granting a variance is not contrary to the public interest. The purpose of the Red Rock Corridor overlay district was to maximize the corridor's potential development, while ensuring development is aesthetically pleasing and compatible with the existing and future land uses. Eliminating the landscaping requirement could potentially diminish the purpose of the overlay district by delete, by, you know, not, not enforcing the landscaping requirements for, for this such use could lead to future issues with enforcing it down the road. And the fifth thing that we look at is that because circumstances or conditions, there is no possibility that the property can be developed in strict conformity with the provisions of the zoning ordinance, and that authorization of the variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of the property. The proposed banquet slash reception hall is permitted for the property. The application for the variance is basically for the aesthetics of the property, and denying the variance does not prohibit the reasonable use of the property for a banquet slash reception hall use. So based on those five things and the history of how we went about this process, staff does not believe that there is unwarranted hardship created by the zoning ordinance, therefore staff is recommending denial of 13-003 to eliminate the landscaping buffer between lots one and two. Just a quick side note on the process of this, we need a 66% vote for a variance for the, from the entire, so there's five of you, all five of you either have to vote for approval or denial on this variance for it to either be approved or denied. If we have a split decision, the variance obviously fails, which then means it's denied as well. So if there is, you know, if, if you wish to approve the variance to allow the elimination of the, the landscaping, then it would have to be a 5-0 vote for approval of the variance. Otherwise, any other result would represent a denial for this application.
Mr. Chair? A denial which could be appealed, though, right?
To Circuit Court.
Circuit Court. Commissioners, questions for Dustin?
Yeah, Dustin. So, so as we look at that site plan right now, okay, so that means on the bottom, which is in the south, that means they've got 15 feet along there that they can't plant anything in, or that's where they, could they plant trees along there as a screed?
According to, down here?
Yes, down here.
Well, the way, the way that the Red Rock Corridor, they could plant something down there if they wished to. The way the zoning ordinance, the overlay district reads, is it, is it separates, it requires the landscaping buffer between, it doesn't require it between ag, commercial and ag. And so to the south is ag use.
That's what I was wondering.
So, so there's no buffer between ag and, and a commercial or industrial or any type of development like that, because we didn't want to, we didn't want to put that, and I mean, we're up against ag most of the time when we do these. What the, what it did call out is that in commercial developments, between commercial lots, or commercial and industrial lots, or industrial, industrial, or commercial and residential, you know, there's a, there's a... you know, there's a chart. So, between a residential and a commercial, there's a 30-foot buffer that the commercial property is required to have. The residential wouldn't be required for it to be the commercial property. Between commercial and commercial, there's a 15-foot buffer for each commercial lot. The reason we called that out is, one, for aesthetics reasons. We wanted to create aesthetically pleasing developments along the corridor. Also, when you look at our zoning ordinance, if you look at what's allowed in our commercial district, it varies very much. It's not like the city where we have a C1, C2, C3, C4. We have one commercial district. So, if you look at the things that are allowed in our commercial district, you could have, lot two could be a daycare, and lot one could be, you know, a contractor's storage yard or something. And that was another reason we kind of incorporated those landscaping requirements between commercial lots. Because you could have such a variety of uses within the commercial district.
So, given the fact that he actually owns them both, now see in my mind, looking at, okay, so, Mr. Asim and his partner, they own the rest of the land, it's the highway, so, so they could plop in three buildings and say, well, we own them all, so we don't need any variance, is what you're saying? Or no setbacks in between those buildings?
I guess I missed, I didn't understand.
If they're all under one lot.
If they're all under one lot, and you built three different buildings, well, now I don't need those, that, what you're doing right there.
Yeah, so if they were, if this was two acres, one two-acre lot, they could build three buildings there. They wouldn't require any landscaping between them. You know, three different uses on one property, basically.
That's what, my only thing of this, if the guy holds both lots, I don't want finance differently.
The issue, the issue that we run into is, if we don't require any landscaping, likely they're just gonna pave all the way up to the parking, the lot line. The issue is, is if he were to sell lot one, one, he loses some of his required parking in which the conditional use permit, recall that we'd have to come back and review the site plan. The other issue is, we'll never, so say someone else new comes into lot one, how do we tell them that they have to tear up asphalt and put a 15-foot landscaping buffer in there? I don't think we could ever get, even if that were to go forward, I think it would hard for us to justify tearing out asphalt.
So, is the issue that there are two lots planted, or that they are under different ownership?
No, the issue is, is that, because of financial reasons.
I got that.
They planted two lots.
Right.
Prior to getting approval, site plan approval.
And if, even if, because there are two lots, even if it was the same owner, without any of this contract.
Yeah, if Sam owned all, if Sam owned all this and developed it into five commercial lots, this 12 acres.
I got that.
Yeah.
My question, listen carefully, my question, if it's two lots.
Yep.
Same owner.
Yep.
Would the buffer be required?
Yes.
So I thought, so it's a lot, it's a lot issue, it's not an ownership issue.
It's the lot, yeah, it's the lot.
Because we get it, you know, shoot, I don't own anything, my bank owns that, right? So, it's not ever one of those situations, it's how it's planted.
Yeah.
Right? Got it. Thank you. Other questions for Dustin?
Dustin, didn't we establish with the Red Rock Corridor that that allowed, especially with the lots, that they would be separated because of that buffer?
Yeah, essentially, you know, they could pave their parking all the way up to this property line, but if they were to build a building over here, they'd still have to be set back so many feet, 10 feet, I believe it is. But because of the corridor overlay district, it actually adds an extra five feet for these commercial lots to have a little bit more space in between there. You know, it kind of, you know, like I said, it was more aesthetically pleasing things. You know, we even discussed fencing and stuff like that at the corridor thing. We nexted all that, and we said, you know, landscaping, the landscaping is based on, it's a 15-foot required buffer, and then based on the linear footage of the lot line is how many trees are required. So this is 225 feet, so it's five trees per 100 linear feet, so that's 12 trees on each side of the property, and they have to be evenly spaced throughout the buffer.
Yeah, now, that takes into account, since they're using a joint driveway, is there the setback then to where the trees start?
Yeah.
Would this all be written down someplace?
Yeah, so, obviously, since there's a joint access there, we can't have the trees coming all the way out into the access point, so.
Yeah.
And that, and obviously, you know, this site plan hasn't been approved, but, you know, we're accepting of, you know, the way they've shown the landscaping, obviously they don't want to even have it on there. But, you know, if this was the site plan that were to come in with that landscaping there, you know, we'd be okay with it being set back, so obviously we gotta provide space for the driveway access and the in-and-out traffic that's going to happen between the lots.
Thank you, Dustin. Is the petitioner here?
Sam Asim again, through Matt Sipari. Again, this is, I mean, this is the difficulty in writing any kind of legislation, rules and regulations on this. This is clearly a unique situation, but it comes down to me to more common sense. And I will go on the record, even though I won't own lot one, other than having a vendor's interest in the contract or deed, I don't have a problem cutting out 15 feet of asphalt, and I don't believe Mr. Sipari is gonna have a problem cutting out 15 feet. The intent, again, not to skate around issues here, but the thumb is gonna be, let's take a disaster scenario, and he loses lot one. Whoever ends up with lot two then, because now he's in noncompliance with that use, whoever ends up, so presumably he would, you know, go into default on that and lose that as well, it's not gonna be the same type of use, because he no longer is meeting the parking criteria. So, the whole premise on putting those controls on the first deal is gonna salvage this part of it, too, in the event that it really and truly becomes two separate owners. So, that, that's kind of what we're appealing to, is that, it's kind of silly, I mean, if, like I said, if everything goes, and it should, like everybody's planning here, you know, yes, it was done solely for financing, and that is a fact, and, and once he completes the contract on the other deal, this, I have no doubt he'll unify the lot into a single lot. That's why we're, that's, but the only reason this was done was for financing reasons. So, picture, I mean, you know, as you study that picture, I mean, it's a waste of ground, and it doesn't make sense in this particular case. And again, there is a fallback position in the event of a default situation, so.
Sam, you know, if that was eliminated and paved, the drainage then would be much greater. I mean, just having an interruption and the asphalt, you know, guides the water, you know, potentially it could work as a bio-swell or something. But, how would, how would drainage go here if we paved the whole thing, so to speak?
That's such a, from, you know, what, we're talking 15, or, you know, 30 feet by, it's not gonna increase it in a material fashion.
Right, but otherwise it would absorb some of that water, you know, it could flow into there.
Well, not really, because it's gonna have curb, you know, it'd have curb and gutter on it, and it's just, all it's gonna do is redirect it around, so, I don't see it slowing the flow at all.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So, Sam, make sure I understand, so you're kind of, totally eliminating those trees, right?
Eliminating that divider, yes, that's what, totally eliminating. Right. Yeah, landscaping would be made up in other areas on the green space. And, I don't know how familiar you folks are with the site out there, but to the south, I know there was a question raised on that south edge there, there is a major drainage way that comes through there, on that south side of this property. I mean, not on the property, but just off in the ground there.
For me, the property to the north there, though, is pretty steeply higher, isn't it?
No, I wouldn't say it's steeply higher, that where he's building, the building is lower. It is.
But above them, you know, that water eventually, I mean, I'm just thinking about drainage, sorry. Potentially, it's water from up there is gonna go somewhere, too.
Correct, there's no question about it, but the one thing the law is clear on is, now that he's a downstream owner, you know, if we're hard surfacing that, we cannot put more water onto him or the downstream user than what was there prior. So, those things will have to be dealt with as we develop the stuff further to the north.
I said one more, and I apologize for asking unrelated questions. A sewer system for this type of facility where you've got a kitchen, is that different than a regular septic?
There's special grease trap requirements for the kitchen.
I thought there was, I just, that's just a curiosity question, thank you.
Sam, I was just wondering if there's another way to skin a cat, although you mentioned curb and gutter, I'm not sure if curb and gutter is a requirement in a parking area here. So, if you eliminated the curb and gutter, it seems that staff is concerned that should lot one revert to different ownership, that somebody would have to tear it up. I get your point, that that's their requirement, but is another way to skin a cat, is it doesn't look like you're putting any more asphalt down than if you were to just eliminate that and move that parking from lot one up to the lot line? The amount of asphalt placed doesn't, I don't know whether you're really increasing it, so could you just leave, let's say there was, if the commission wanted to be lenient with how long it takes before you put something other than grass in there, but maybe it's a two-year plan to get the shrubbery and the other landscaping, but why not configure the parking lot in that shape, have the same amount of, in my mind, same amount of asphalt, just grass it for now, and later on come back, put the shrubs in, you know, if there was some lenience in the timeline, which is none of anything here. And then you've diminished their concerns about if it reverts to a different owner, there's no tear up, because it's already complying with the setback.
Well, and the only thing it does is, with snow removal in particular, it's really a cumbersome scenario, and given that, that, all things being equal, he's gonna own both of those anyway. And, so, and I really think, and I, I think that with the thumb that we've left on there on the other deal, I really believe that the county's gonna be protected on that. And like I said, I have no bones going on the record, is the, having the vendor's interest in lot one, and, you know, it's just not a big deal to saw cut that out, tear it out, it isn't. So, I, if that's the concern, it's not a big deal to do that.
Any other questions for Mr. Asim? Thank you.
You bet.
Are there others that would like to speak to the side? Hearing none? I think as a chair, I gotta vote based on what I just heard about the funding, right?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, let's just discuss.
Yes.
I always respect what the guys do, you know, on this corridor work and all the work that's went in, and I'm always very reluctant to change it. Very reluctant. Especially, this doesn't have to be a curb and gutter, it can just be a pavement under the grass. So you don't have the cost to put in the curb, you still have the same thing, but way bottom, a very good point there. And that's why I would tend to support even on.
I guess I would, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would support, I think, the denial, too, from the simple fact that, and it goes back to what Mike says a lot, you do it once, it's precedent, and somebody else, oh, but I own both, type of thing, come in to us and want the same variance if we grant it once, that, I hate to set the precedence, but, doing that.
Your motion?
Well, let me just make, mine, I think it would not be that easy to convince the next person to tear it up. At the same time, if this was one, one lot, we would not have this problem. And so, we have this funny little, little situation here, and I think that, you know, it's hard enough to be in business anyway. I think that having a buffer on the north end would be sufficient for me, that would just be my idea.
Okay, Mr. Matt, sure. Okay, so, Mr. Bart, let me just ask you about that. Somewhere in this, okay, see, I'm just picturing this, I'm driving around the road, and I just see this big empty parking lot, a building, might be a nice building, which is empty. Now, if you at least required some trees on the north side of the parking that you're proposing here, at least it would do something for the aesthetics of the thing. And then it isn't just, you know, a piece of blacktop, and a pasture, basically, you know, and I think it would look so much better. That's why, I like the looks of some, I guess I like trees and shrubs, I'm kinda bad that way, maybe, but to me, that's just normal. You should have trees and shrubs to make it look good, and by putting that in there, you're at least required to plant something in there. There will be on the north side, that, that part is all gonna be tree-lined, but that's not the issue there.
North of the asphalt or on the north edge of the?
On the north edge of the lot. Of lot one, so if you go to the far north edge, that will be placed in there. It's not depicted on this drawing, but that is the way, there'll be trees in there.
Mr. Chairman, I sat on the Red Rock Corridor with several other people, and we took a lot of deliberations, thought about what that whole area would look like, we knew that that particular area was a commercial area, didn't know what would happen in that area, there's no doubt, and there's still more that could come. But, since they are two lots, there needs to be a separation there, and it's very hard for me to think anything different and set a new precedent here by saying that we're not gonna deny this.
Mr. Chairman, as far as concern, I understand how about money and business, it takes more of it. I don't think we're really chugging costing them anymore by doing this, since there's not, you know, we're just requiring pavement, we're not requiring curb and gutter, you know, significantly more. And that's why, like I said, I would not, I'd still support it if you don't.
Need a motion?
I'll move for a denial.
I'll second that.
More discussion?
Well, I would just say, I guess, in the sense that apparently unanimity is required for us to take any action, I will go ahead and support the action.
Need further discussion? We have a motion to deny the variance, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same side. Okay, that takes us through the normal items on the agenda, and then are there any business items you guys wanna pay us on?
Not that I know of. I don't have any items.
New business in Vision 2035? Have we been sued by anybody?
Well, the gun club, we took action on the gun club last Tuesday, that was approved with some modifications, I guess, is the best way to put it.
The big sue one.
The big sue.
I guess it was two weeks ago.
Oh.
No, what was last Tuesday?
What modifications?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Uh, well, basically, it came out to be the same, pretty much as you recommended, Pecos left in, the fact that they had to keep the one long-range closed until they put the baffles up. He just reworded something, so, essentially the same.
So, 100 yards, you know, to. And I think the proponents were happy, and I've not heard from proponents.
This, I just wanted to give you just a kind of heads up of our cleanup projects. I know I brought this to you previously, so just kind of, overall, from what we had for 2012, here is just a photo of the pit that we used for the cleanup project this past fall. Again, you can see here are the numbers, the totals that we've had from the fall of 2010 to the fall of 2012. Four hundred and, almost 490 tons of material that we've removed over the couple years. And then as you move farther down on here, it shows you the invites, how many residential properties we've invited each time. And you can see through 2012, about 5,600 invites have been sent out over the two-year timeframe. I think here is our, the cleanup projects that we've done. All the slashed and colored areas are where we have been and the properties that we have invited so far. So you can see that we've hit up almost every populated area in the county. There's some more rural areas that we're going to be doing, and I'll show you them next. On the right-hand side, you can see that we've done 22 events, 5,600 residential properties, approximately 488 tons of material. And again, that was from fall of 2010 to fall of 2012. Looking at them areas, again, the ones that we have done are in the green now. The area that we're gonna be doing and servicing for the cleanup project this May 4th?
Fourth.
Which is not this coming Saturday, it's Tuesday, it's a couple weeks away. That area in the orange on the left, the northwest side of the map here, which is six townships that we will be having the cleanup project at the Tri Valley High School. So we'll be up in that area. So, our map after that one will look a lot larger, because we're taking in six townships right there. We are proposing something. We are proposing something in the blue, the blue shaded area on the northeast corner. We don't have a lot of funds left after, I anticipate we will not have very much funds left after the cleanup at Tri Valley, thinking maybe we'll do a tire thing or something else and just do a couple evenings, maybe it's a Friday and a Saturday, just so it gives some, some other options during the week that we could be there and just take some tires or something else that we can't do a full cleanup for those properties.
Is the cost dependent upon what type of material you get and the tonnage you haul away? Is that primarily?
It's, it's really, some of that is, like, we'll, we'll collect tires in this one on May fifth, fourth?
Fourth.
Because we, we don't know.
Nice snow day.
Yeah, so, you know, if we have a lot of tires, I'm a, I'm a hundred and thirty-five dollars a ton to, to get rid of the tires. Everything else is approximately thirty-five dollars a ton. And if I get a wood chipper in there, I mean, I can, I can have, get, if I don't have to do big containers or front loaders for a lot of wood, and I'm guessing this year we'll have a lot of branches, that kind of stuff. So I'm hoping that we can get a wood chipper. I've left some messages. It doesn't seem like.
They're busy.
They're busy. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll still be able to get one because it saved us probably twenty-five hundred dollars at least by having a wood chipper and not having the front loaders or having NOVAC services for that type of material.
Or you have to push it out maybe so that those wood chipper's are back and available and you don't have to worry about storm?
You know what, that would be, it would be great if we were able to do that. I just don't, I don't think, our, our funding runs out for this grant at the end of June, so we would, we'd be out of luck after a bit. I just have a few photos here again. Here's at the Minnehaia gravel pit location. You see our staff at work here, loading up. Here, that U-Haul, we actually went and picked up, we have something in place that if somebody needs some help, needs some assistance, we can go pick up some things. So we rent a trailer and go, go pick up and help some. And this was more than likely, it was an elderly, a gentleman that needed some assistance. So that's, it was kind of nice that we were able to provide that service. Again, it was kind of dark when we started off in the morning, pretty foggy out, so we had the cones out there. But it was, it was a great area that we had. Again, you can see the wood chipper here on the top left. People brought items, you know, they get strapped to the top of their van, however they get them, they, they get them there. And then also Split Rock Township, your own Bonnie Duffy there on the bottom left. We'd love to have a picture of her and everyone.
And we thank you.
And this area, I guess, is what I'm told, looks a lot different today in this photo than what it does currently in the Pine Lake Hills area that is now full of branches. Probably looks like a big snow pile. Again, just some other photos of staff and the people that were out helping and helping each other as we did this event. A lot of good community service there, I guess, if you will, and a lot of residents helping each other. Again, we are also in Renner. Again, staff here assisting the people that would come in and out and the people that get stuck in the dumpsters, apparently, it looks like.
Pack them in, pack it in.
So anyway, that's all I had for you again. Here's just the map of the areas that we've been. We've, we've serviced a lot of areas and had a lot of happy people and people that want us to come back again.
And now we're holding our own, the eighteenth of May. We're going to try and.
Yeah, just, just technical.
Yeah.
I have to admit that I was a skeptic, really, because, you know, I can understand why you'd want to triple handle things because you can just move it straight to the dump. But it's worked out fantastic, so congratulations. You're building a sense of community. I can't believe all the stuff you collected.
And it's free. That's a lot, too.
It's the federal government's money, that was.
Yeah, well, yeah, but for the.
There's, there's no such thing as a free line. That's the thing.
Yeah, but you pay for it one way or the other, though, sometimes.
So Pat, did you find any good items?
So if we don't spend the money, nobody else will?
No, I mean, it costs money, it costs money for us to chase after them to clean it up. So I mean.
Yeah, right.